We'll go by that.
Everyone will please stand, face the flag, and if so inclined, join us in the pledge.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we approve the agenda, we've got at least two additions to that. And in order to make the discussion on snow removal, the last part of the agenda, we'll do a 6B and a 6C, and they're both family medical leave conversations. So 6B, 6C, and we'll explain when we get there. Anyone else have any, you have anything else? Any additions, subtractions? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda amendment. Motion by Kurt. Seconded by Rob. Other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carrie. Schedule presenter, Superintendent Geist, in the back to school address.
Yeah, I will keep this really simple, especially since some people think I'm Gabby. But I will, I will go through a few things. This was meant to be the day before we went back to school. So I have changed a few things from the first day because we had kids that registered on the first day of school. But I do want to go through a little bit of enrollment and a few other things. First of all, just thanking publicly our maintenance crew, our summer school teachers, and our technology staff again, especially the hours they put in. I mean, it's just, if your kids or anyone has been involved in summer school, you know how many hours they're spending here and planning for those kids. So the things that Dave and his crew got done, I just can't even imagine how they got it done, but he did. So thank you again to all of those people. Our elementary, I did add our pre-K numbers. Remember, our pre-K is the class that they're anticipating being very, very large. The numbers of enrollment in our four-year-old program, our three-year program, would show that that is probably going to be true. The lowest we see that coming in is 106, with the highest being right around 121. Those model, those trending models haven't changed, and that's pretty typical once they're four-year-olds, we kind of know where they're going to go to school. So that'll be something we'll be planning for, for next year. Jennifer and I, in the spring, will start looking at that's going to need to look like five sections instead of four, all of those conversations, and we'll know when that gets a little closer. As you can see, our incoming kindergarten ended up being 67 instead of 68, but our first grade did increase to 69. Total enrollment at the elementary is 571, which is really consistent in what we thought it would be overall. So keep in mind that 67 number, we'll get down here later. Then you get to the high school, and you'll see some more consistency amongst the grade levels. Tim made a comment the other day, since he's been here, this is the highest enrollment he's had in his building. So that's pretty good. That's a really, really good sign, and I'm going to show you why and how we got there. The elementary gained 21 kids and 12, 21 kids and 12 students left, so that gives us kind of a net gain of nine. High school, middle school gained 30 new students, and we lost 14 with a net gain of 16. So if you add those all together, that's including our preschool, that is not what the HBL bases their numbers off of, but for this conversation, we're just over 1,200 students. Our overall enrollment is neutral, though. Remember, in our planning series, we thought we were going to be down around $125,000 because of those students that we anticipated leaving, our high school seniors and our incoming kindergarten class. But because of open enrollment, I'm sure you read that in the paper last week, we are exactly neutral. I guess as of today, we're up two kids. But to have a graduating class of 95 and an incoming kindergarten of 67, you know, that's, that's pretty remarkable that we're up anything. So I think that's a really good sign. I think the, the housing market is still an issue in our town, and I know that daycare is still somewhat of an issue in our town. People are really struggling to find daycare here. Jennifer, do you have any idea what would be the number that, I know there's several that go to Northfield? They do have daycare with their, their younger programs, so they can take all their kids to Northfield. So if we lose any elementary students, it's typically there because they can use their daycare programs. I, I know it's, that, I'm feeling a four, for sure, but other than that, because I don't have exact numbers, but that's going to be, want to be something we look at down the road, is what we want to do about that. We've got remarkable daycares in town. They're the best ever, we just don't have enough of them. We'll keep working on that. So overall, you're, we'll call it overall enrollment neutral. New staff, I'm not going to go through all these names, but this tells you what kind of hiring was done this year. And in the midst of a teaching shortage, we're really excited to get some really, really amazing candidates. I compliment both Jennifer and Tim. They take hiring, especially of teachers, extremely, extremely important. They, they take a lot of time and effort and put into that. You do have another custodian. We've got Brett on board, but we're still looking for one more, so if you know of anyone that is looking for a custodial job, please make sure they, they contact Dave or the district office. And then my last slide is just grants. There's been a lot of conversation on what are we doing, you know, what's going on? Right now, you have two ASIS teachers that are covered 60% by a grant. You have a .6 behavioral interventionalist, this is that CEES grant that you may have heard about. We don't pay the other .4, they're only working .6. Carissa Jelming, you remember, she used to teach here before, she is hired into that position, that one is run through GCD, so if you're on that committee, you've probably heard about that one. We have a full-time mental health practitioner, not a full-time, what, what are the days? Halftime?
It's halftime.
Halftime. Mental health practitioner. You've heard a lot about this in the news, lots and lots of work going into mental health, and we think that, that's just great. So far, I think Rachel's doing a great job making connections with kids and things like that.
How's that funded again?
That is funded through the Family Initiative Collaborative.
Okay. And that will continue to?
We don't know. There's just no guarantee. And that's what's hard about grants, is sometimes you get used to those things. Great example of that would be, you know, we had reading interventionalists and all those type of things, that those aren't covered anymore.
So what happens, let's say that's taken away, do we continue to run the program?
We don't. Things like the literacy aid that we used to get, we don't. We move that back in the classroom, we might switch it to ADSS and, and possibly not have other programs. Mr. Swanson's an additional math, you know, help and interventionalist there. So sometimes we do and sometimes we don't, but again, that's our staffing that you'll hear this spring. But it is hard when we lose them. Title one, we've had this, this is a federal grant, this is one that every school has. Skills-based preschool teacher, Dr. Peggy Decker, is going to be our skills-based preschool teacher, and that grant will be for a one-year. That is not full-time either, Jennifer, what is that one? Mornings, Monday through Thursday, thank you. We're really hoping that if we can get some behaviors under control and kind of teach them how to be in school, that by the time they hit kindergarten or first grade, maybe we don't have as many referrals for special education. So there's a lot of belief that this program could really help out with that. And then CTE teachers, Mark Walter and Dwayne Pliscott, 75% of their salary is covered through CTE grants. And as this youth skills training starts up, you'll see more and more of that, like the supplies and the things that go into those classrooms, those will be covered. So roughly, we have $400,000 of paid salaries through grant funding, and then we do have the youth skills training grant that will kick off this year as well. So it's just kind of a quick overview. Come on in. We have ninth graders that will be joining us this year because they need to take in a civics lesson. So when you see a lot of students that come to our, our meetings, they're here to learn some sort of civics lesson. So if you have any questions, I can, I can help you out with that. But I just wanted to mostly give you an overview of our enrollment and where we're at. We're really excited to see the open enrollment, that's been a really, a blessing for the district.
We're going to go through that?
Sure. You want me to just email to you? I would love to do that. It is updated a little bit when Mr. Hagerty came from the newspaper, we didn't have all those people that do the late enrollments, so this is a little bit different, but it'll be the most accurate.
When we plan on declining enrollment, you talked about the, on the money that we were maybe going to lose through that.
I was worried when we had our high school seniors and our incoming K and, and one grades being so low, that was the difference that we had been referencing.
Do you plan ahead for that? And so when, when the enrollment does level out, are we, are we better off by that amount of money?
Yeah, of course we are, that's, that's great to go the, not what we had projected, but remember, you did bring back a first-grade teacher, so that would be a big chunk of that. But yes, no, this does put us ahead, which is a good thing. There's no way to really ever know, especially open enrollment, how could you ever predict who's coming? We try to go by home sales and, you know, when people tell us they're coming, but this year, Lori, would you say 50% of them came the last week of August? It was, it was really late this year, a lot of people came very, very late, so we had no way of projecting that.
Can they come for a variety of reasons, educational, sports, maybe, just a, just a hodgepodge? They can't purchase a house at present, can? Or for whatever reason, open enrollment's just got a lot of?
Middle school sports, believe it or not, in some of the bigger towns, don't have those anymore, or you have to go through the youth athletics, or you have to go, and you're shaking your heads because you know all this, but if you, if you went and you wanted your child to play eighth-grade football, you would have to find your own program to be able to do that. And so I think people want the opportunity for their, especially middle school kids, to have those opportunities. But I think it's because we're an awesome school, and I think people really do see that when they walk through our buildings and they meet our teachers, I think they say, oh my goodness, this is where I want my kid to go to school. I really believe that, so. That's all I have.
Any other questions for Beth?
Thank you, Beth. You're welcome.
Sounds good.
Okay, moving down to reports and communication, does anyone have anything? Our committees are just getting underway this school year, does anybody have any reports or anything? Brendan, does?
I attended the GCD meeting last Thursday night, and it was pretty much business as usual, but they had other staff positions filled except they were short one school psychologist in Canyon, but they thought they would be able to fill that. I hope, I don't think they had a cap date. They approved the paraprofessional master agreement for 2018, a two-year through 2020.
What was their increase, do you remember, they say?
I don't know, I can write that down.
Okay.
They approved their student handbook, no big changes. There are also two other staff that went through Alice Training, and then they'll be doing where the staff will train the other staff. They had their annual report, have 118, 12 staff, 5,000 students served in all the districts.
That's a lot.
Let's see what else. They have 23 new, especially have teachers in all the districts too, so they have a lot of new staff. That's about it. The next meeting is September 27th.
Okay.
Let's write that down.
Questions for Brendan? Okay, we'll be gone.
We have facilities.
Yeah.
Back in August sometime. Dave, Dave just gave an overview of the maintenance items that were taking place in both buildings, and then he's created a spread list for custodial equipment that is going to be a needed replacement in the upcoming years for the whole facility, for both facilities, actually.
Is that a part of the budget for the facility, or is it going to be impacted by the budget?
He wants it incorporated into the five-year projection plan? Not, not for this year, but coming up. So that way, we can always have a projection of where we're going to be, so we're not waiting till it's, the item's done, you know, so. Dave's got a good handle on that.
Yeah, it's kind of like the bus rotation, but those, some of those are extending out past 20 years. Right?
Yeah.
Well, past 20 years. And then the last item was the storm removal, which is on the agenda, so we'll wait till the agenda goes, discuss that piece of it.
We also talked a little bit about the emergency lighting, I just wanted to mention that over at the elementary, and that project did get done, it was fire marshal orders for some of our emergency lighting. I just wanted to kind of mention that, that it looks really good over there now, and we're in a much better place than we were to meet all his requirements.
All right.
Okay. Public input. Anyone who wishes to speak to the board about issues with the school, questions that you have, anything related to school activities, if now is an opportunity to speak? Nothing, we're moving on.
Sure, Hannah, you want to say something?
If you're shaking your head, I take that up right away. Consideration to approve the finance report. Josh?
Yeah, the page three in your packet, and this is a little outdated, as this was meant for the night we had the storm come through, so. In brief, in overview, we've been doing a lot of work in our office, with some around audit, auditors have done their site visit, so we have one more day to come back and review some of things that we have to do for our GASD-75 and some actuarial things, but a big bulk of the work has been done and complete already. I can't give you, you know, flying, airmark where we're flying for fund balance, but fit pretty well with our predicted with the, with the budget, so, you know, plus or minus, pretty close to where we're at at this point, last year, in terms of fund balance, no huge increase for our fund balance and no real large decrease of the fund balance as well, so. You know, that will obviously become clearer as we ramp everything up and gets tighter, and we'll probably present that sometime in the October board frame, hopefully, to get that all wrapped up. In terms of what we have here for our finance report, the top is our bank balances, two checking accounts opened, the Merchant Bank Community Resource, a large portion of the reason why we still have an account with Merchant Bank, one we have our HSE, the staff, health savings account is still through Merchant, and then it's also an interest-bearing account. So when we hit our max on our collateral amount at Community Center Resource, we can still earn interest on account at Merchant Bank, so we just keep both of those active. And generally, when that account is too large, I just move some to the Community Resource. You'll see at the first payroll, the August 30th, just a few lines down on the right-hand side of the column for expense, that's now into your fiscal year 19 budget. So even though we are in fiscal year 19 in July, that July 15, July 30 payroll, we are all booked entered into fiscal year 18, so this payroll is actually the first one that's completely and totally fiscal year 19, the teachers are back, and that's their first paycheck. A little bit above the middle of the page, you'll see on the left side, the tech lease, bus lease, we have multiple leases out for technology, as nearly every student now in our district is on a one-to-one with a device, and a bus lease, and trying to do our, our best part to try to label what each one of those are for, so that the bus number 11, that's the third payment out of five for that bus. Even though they are leases, all of our leases are structured so that at the end, dollar buyout for the leases or for the technology or for the bus, or we just own it, so a little bit of a misnomer in that it says lease, at the end of term, it isn't own, we have to replace those machines or that equipment. Almost on the bottom of the page, the Goodyear and the Dakota County taxes, those are estimates until we actually get the numbers from the county auditors, Dakota County and Goodyear County, but those should fall in within those limits, if anything, this might be a little bit on the conservative side. But what you'll generally see in terms of payments from the state during those timeframes is we have reduction in our ideas, payments or our payments from the state of Minnesota for education, as it's offset by that county payment. Generally, what you can kind of think of is the county payment that comes in is our levy, so a referendum, levy items that we go for, building, debt, and whatnot, whereas your ideas are more of your revenue from that the state. And then finally, at the bottom, you'll see the last payroll, the 1115, significantly larger than other payrolls in, in comparison, and that is generally at the end of seasons, that'll be approximately at the end of the fall season, all of the sports coaches, activities coaches, directors, advisors will be paid, so that's a little bit larger payroll during that period. If you have any questions, I can do my best to answer what you have.
Anything for Josh?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry to approve the finance report, do we hear a second?
A second.
Second by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Well, usually on that, on that meeting when we get into the school year, we, we ask the principals just to throw up, throughout your first week, how it went, and I know that you don't have anything listed here, and I know you're not on the report, but how did it start for you, Jen?
You know, as you're aware, we did the bomber day conferences, so what that looked like is that our official start date of school was Thursday, and Tuesday and Wednesday, we were used to have conferences scheduled with teachers, and so it replaces an open house feeling and that, that less, less chaotic, for sure. And so out of 572 students, we had five students not conference with their teacher. So I was going into it hoping for, you know, under 50 students, because I have been speaking with other principals who were doing other conferences like this, and I didn't want to set myself up for it, but I was pretty impressed. So we did a slick system, having the parents sign up for it, and that went well. But I will second the maintenance crew and the technology staff, I mean, with the amount of staff, little staff we have, the things that were accomplished and done, like my building looks amazing, and teachers feel that and parents feel that when they come in, and so I just, and also with the technology staff, making sure everyone is up and running, so. So yeah, so today's day three officially in, and, you know, that's good, no kindergarten is crying or anything like that, so. I love all of you.
Mr. Hodges?
Been a really smooth start to the school year. It's, I always kind of, in that first week, asked people, am I missing something? But no, it was, it was a great start to the year, and, you know, we had some really good staff development, we had top 20 training come in and talk to staff, and I got that, I think that got them really pumped up and positive about the start of the school year, so. So far, so good. We're off to a good start.
Mr. Peterson, I will leave you till the storm removal conversation, you can tell what you think. Okay, next page, consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and can be enacted with one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any particular item, it can be removed from the agenda per separate item or action.
I just always like to point out our gifts, the Mayo, Mankato area foundation, the Leland family, and the Canaffo's American Legion, again, have made very significant donations to different programs, and I just want to thank them publicly for doing that. It's really remarkable for the programs.
The Leland family was residents here 25 years ago, I suppose, big tennis at that time, if that's what you mean, going forward, yeah.
It's neat to see them give back to the programs, and I've got a couple tennis people in the room, so I know they're very appreciative of it, so.
I'm going to make the assumption that the new boy's soccer coach has his license?
He does. Great question. Did you guys hear what he was asking? If the new head coach was able to, for the soccer program, was able to get his licensure, and he was. Another question that came up, just so that everyone knows, the tech support gets a little confusing, but our, our open house and our, our conference nights and things like that, and putting all the cases on the devices and, and just getting them programmed and ready to go, that does take some time, so we were able to hire some high schoolers, very cheap to get that done, and we're very thankful for that, but if you're wondering what the tech support is on, then that's what that was. Yeah, it really worked out well.
Do you have anything on the expenditures?
I was just looking, and I think you already answered it, Dave, that's for this last month for electrical, that was for the emergency lighting, is that right? That's your?
I don't know exactly which bill you, no.
Those are for some cleanup things that were done in the auditorium towards the, then the fieldhouse locker room, some electrical over there that needs to be updated and repaired.
What's, what's the number, Kurt?
Oh, that'd be, there's two of them, and that's just, okay, there's 55839, and I just saw it as all combined, and 55960.
A large portion of that, there'll be some for the technology devices, have TVs in each of the rooms, we have to do some wiring to get outlets and whatnot to them, so there'll be some of that cost as well.
55723?
Sports imports, sorry, sports imports. So the $20,000 there are for the new carbon fiber volleyball standards, that's not all district expense, $5,000 of that came out of district budget, the remainder is all fundraised by Miss Husef and the volleyball program, so youth athletic paid a big chunk towards it, jail volleyball paid a big chunk towards it, the women's volleyball league that comes in and uses it, and then some cost offset with the community as well, so all organizations and patrons that use the volleyball nets helped kick in towards that. Much lighter and stronger sets, the ones that were in the fieldhouse were pretty old and difficult, cumbersome to move, move around. These, I believe, I haven't done them yet, I've set up plenty of volleyball nets in my time, being ready for practices and whatnot. These would be much easier to set up and tear down. I don't know that you all necessarily have a bunch of people set up and tearing things down, because you tend to run into either misuse or damage and all those things, but quite a bit easier and lighter to set up and tear down by a much broader range of individuals, but they're spending, and like I said, the district only put $5,000 toward it, the rest of it all fundraised by volleyball program.
And they are much easier for setup and lightweight, extremely lightweight. Some of those were steel originally, and they were extremely heavy.
But wasn't one set told, the ref said that we couldn't use them anymore, that they were so bad that someone would get hurt if they came down that way?
Bend in or make them until deteriorate so much they won't hold their height, they have to set up.
They're like a, a screw to kind of hold the height, and they would just keep dropping and falling, and these are a pin where they can't drop, and you can easily adjust to whatever height that you need.
Anything else?
55848. San Paul Lutheran School?
Yeah.
Yep, so non-public reimbursement. The portion of that's through the NDE, that's for non-public education. If we don't pay it out to St. Paul schools, it's, it's reduction in our revenue anyway, so it's cost can go to the district, but because they're residents in our district, a portion of our revenue goes to them for like textbooks, transportation, that and whatnot, so it's just reimbursement for St. Paul schools.
All right. And then just 55867, CDW equipment purchase?
CDW is a technology vendor, so most likely computers and monitors, a chip.
Anything else? Back at it? Okay, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt, second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carrie. We have nothing under old business, so on the new business, item one is a consideration to set the truth and taxation date as December 17th at 6:00 PM in the high school boardroom.
Lori, I've got it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Brenda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry to approve December 17th as our truth and taxation date. Other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve a medical leave.
Well, the first one tonight is for Kathy Illa, she believes she'll be out for three weeks approximately, Lori, approximately three weeks, and she has already started this leave.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve the 1819 mentor program and stipends.
Okay, the program is attached, so if anyone wants to go in there and look, there have been no changes to the overall program. The program will not exceed $5,000, and what I like about that is that even if we have a lot of new teachers or any programming that goes along with this, it cannot go over 5,000. The two co-coordinators again are Lori Turner and Amy Donbeck. So if you have any specific questions, I can go through it, nothing has changed. This, if you remember correctly, is a program from many years ago that Kay Saban started, still really well-known in the area, it's been a very, very good program. If you have any questions, I can help you out, if I'm very pleased with what they're doing.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Brenda to approve the mentor program for the upcoming year.
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve the second reading of policy 722, public data requests.
Okay, you had your first reading back in July, and second reading will change the date on here because it says August 27th, but we will get that changed, but as you can see, go all the way down to the bottom, and again, this is your second reading, so I know you've already read it, and if you have any questions, Lori or myself can help with that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Kurt to approve the second reading of 722.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve a 1.0 FTE elementary teacher contract for 1819.
Um, this is that first grade teacher that you allowed us to hire back? And we're so excited that we were able to snag Ashley Shaw for that position. Uh, that name is familiar to you. She's done a lot of long-term subbing for us and did her student teaching here. Um, she is a great addition to the elementary. And I know Jennifer and I are both thrilled that she accepted.
Principal comment at all?
Nope, I will second that.
Happy to have her, huh?
I have my eye on that one.
Yep, it's my recommendation to approve that, please.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry to approve the 1.0 elementary contract?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve Andrea Dolan as a CFEF board member.
This is just standard procedure. Anytime they get a new board member, we technically have to approve it. Just like if we did fundraising, you have to approve whatever they're fundraising for. Uh, so this is just standard procedure, and we wanna thank Andrea Dolan for stepping up to the plate and being on the Canoffalas Education Foundation Board.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Brenda? Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Other discussion?
Who stepped out, doesn't matter, but...
Um, I would have to go get my list. Uh, there are actually four people. Just, it was kinda rotated through who's coming off the board and who's coming on. Yep. I can send that to you, though.
It's a big board, isn't it?
It has, but it, you know, it really brings a lot of different ideas to the table. And I think that's very good. So, you know, they vote differently on different things. And I feel like would that make people get a good representation of elementary and high school and, and things like that? So it's good.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor of the approval of Andrea Dolan for the foundation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. 6B, Family Medical Leave Act.
Uh, the first one is for Josh Davison. He will be out approximately two to three weeks, um, starting in October. And it would be my recommendation to approve that. Um, I will be covering the majority of his things. He is going to do some of his things in the evening and things like that. But we have a plan in place. So it would be my, my recommendation to approve that.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt? You second?
Yep.
Katie on the second? Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Uh, 6C, Family Medical Leave Act.
Uh, the next one is for Lori Hanson. Uh, she'll be out only starting September 25th and be out approximately three to four weeks. Again, these are all the dates you've heard today are all approximates. And again, uh, we'll have that looked out in the office. There will be an overlap between Lori and Josh, but I've got it, we're good. I think we've got it covered. We feel really good about it.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Other discussion?
Lori's still gonna come at the board meetings. Oh, maybe not.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Last item, last item on the agenda is the snow removal discussion.
And I don't think this one is as grand as you're thinking it is. I know sometimes when snow removal's on the agenda, we think this big, huge discussion like it's been in the past. This one is kind of a discussion prior to that, uh, looking at what we wanna do for equipment needs. Um, not, we're not tonight gonna talk about what we're doing for snow removal. Rather, we're talking about making sure we have the right equipment to do what we need to do. And so turn it over to either Jerry or Dave, most likely.
Dave.
Well, um, the plan was always to have a discussion about snow removal after a couple years of doing it. Um, I know that the board wanted to kinda figure out how it was gonna work and, um, with the equipment that we have. Uh, we had a plan to originally purchase the equipment with the savings of the snow removal, which we did accomplish within two years. Uh, the equipment was paid for. Um, I guess my concern is going into the future here, where are we at with equipment? Uh, it's equipment, it does not last forever. I don't know how far we wanna push our luck with the equipment we currently have. I surely don't wanna be in a situation where we have equipment breaking down in the middle of a very, very snowy winter, uh, with no options. So looking ahead to the future, just, uh, I think it needs to be a discussion, and I think we need to have a plan in place. And, um, staffing is another issue. We've had a heck of a time trying to get people to come in here, um, as custodians, and that's a part of their responsibility is to help out with the outside of the, of the facility in the winter. Um, so I just think it's important that, uh, you know, we have an open discussion about maybe where we go.
Are you looking at maybe the equipment we have now, it's no, no longer under warranty, that sort of thing, and buying something else that's under warranty? So it's...
He's mostly talking about the used truck that we bought? That would be the first item.
Well, that'd be the first item, yeah.
It's just, it's used, and we bought it for a great price. But, you know, as, as it's pushing snow, we're seeing issues with it, so.
What kind of issues are you looking at?
Anything, motor blows up, transmission goes out, rear end goes out. Uh, take you three weeks to get it back on the road. You gotta find another vehicle. You know, this, this, uh, the original plan was to try it and see how it worked out and get that equipment paid for. Keep in mind, it's equipment that we use all year round. Um, so it was needed regardless. Uh, but my concerns are, yeah, I mean, I'm not really budgeting for a new truck to replace it. And how long am I gonna push my luck? That's my concern.
Wouldn't that be a part of the facility's budget, though? I mean, we're looking at the snow removal, same with everything else, no?
We don't have it built in. It would be actually your transportation budget. They maintain our vehicles.
So should we get Andy in on that?
We could. He doesn't really want to be a part of that. Um, and, and I don't know what the right way to do it is. It doesn't go under the schools and the facilities. Should it be under his fleet? Um, I would argue that we pay the mechanic, so it would be under our fleet, our transportation fleet. Uh, but how, how would you explain it? I, I don't know if he wants to add a truck to that. Do you know?
No, I don't know if you guys have ever done this before.
Right.
Prior to me coming here. I don't know.
We don't, we, we just have always, we've always hired out snow removal. Uh, this is a first for us.
Yeah, so I don't know how that would be handled. And, uh, like I said, I mean, you know, we didn't buy a brand-new vehicle by any means. And, uh, the last few winters have been extremely wet, hard winters. I mean, we had late, late snow last year, and I don't have any problems right now trying to prevent that. I don't wanna come to this board January 'cause we were shut down from school for three days 'cause we couldn't get, you know, anything cleared out or find anyone to help us.
So what are, what are we looking at for right now, Dave? We got the plow truck, we got the payloader, basically. We got, what else are we looking at?
I have the smaller caborder that's for sidewalks, snow, snow blowers and shovels.
And a brush.
Okay.
Do you have a deal with that burger setup? If something fails, I'll come up, replace, while they fix? It's typical, I think, what they've done. They're pretty good about if something fails, well, under warranty or not. I don't know if you have any conversations with them or not.
With who? I'm sorry.
Would you buy them?
Nevers.
Never?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, if it came to the tractor, that would probably be the least of my worries. Um, when I didn't have equipment coming in, they got me out of the loaner right away.
Right.
I mean...
Okay.
Um, but that's probably my best piece of equipment. I mean, that, that was brand-new, it gets maintained on a regular basis.
So we're just talking about the truck?
Well, I mean, right now we are. That'd be my, my first, that'd be my first concern. And also, my other concern is, uh, you know, we've learned a few things through this process. Number one is we have an extremely angled parking lot that gets extremely wet and icy. And alls we have is, uh, sidewalk sander that we do the entire parking lot with. I mean, I, I think we need to, you know, if you're gonna be self-sustained, you need to add equipment. You get, you need to be more efficient. Um, uh, you know, a full-size sander would, I, I think is necessary to be able to get the, you know, a couple hundred thousand feet, square feet of parking lot that we have in a timely fashion. Um, keep in mind, you know, there's literally two people that do it all. So not only do you have to move the snow, but you have to prep the sidewalks, and then you have to get the parking lot.
That was all part of the equation when you took it over, right?
Yeah, and we did it. Yep.
Yeah, I guess my thoughts are, we've got the transportation company maintains all of our vehicles. The vans, buses, the cars. Would that not fit under that profile, that handy we take care of? Get recommendations, I want to replace and cost and shopping and all that.
I think he'd be, and I don't wanna speak for him, but I do think he'd be okay with that if he was able to find the truck and he was able to... This last one, Dave found a great deal on it. He, you know, he, I, I don't know if Andy agrees with that. He wants to be the one doing the purchasing then.
Well, he's gonna be the one maintaining, I guess. It would make sense to leave it all under one umbrella. We're, we're doing transportation. I mean, Dave will have input, look what you're looking at. I think Andy's done that already with used buses, used vans and all that.
We, the truck, we could easily, you know, put under transportation and, and, you know, budget for that accordingly. I think we're just looking for some, what do we wanna do about adding snow removal items?
You know, is there any thoughts about snow removal? We just, you know, we discussed it three years ago as a board, that after a couple years, any input from the board on how things went? Where do, you know, do we, you know? Is there any input?
What I've heard is that things go pretty well, David. I mentioned about the ice, and I've heard that the, the parking lot gets pretty icing for a lot of people when, when it hits. I think that's the biggest issue. I guess my question is, you can, you can buy a new vehicle, but if anyone goes down, how do you, how do you assure that you got something else for backup? How much would you, if you didn't have that plow truck, how backed up would you be? I mean, it'd take a lot longer. Are we looking at something that, for backup too? Because if it goes bad, where do you go?
You're exactly right. That's a great point. We pushed our luck by not having that. Yeah, that could easily happen. They're, they're mechanical pieces of equipment, and they're getting worked hard. You bet. Um, we had a hydraulic line break on the new tractor. Can't operate the blade. That's already happened to us. We used, you know, the truck until we could get, luckily, you know, that day we, uh, canceled, you know, by the grace of God, that day. Um, so we were able to fix it and be able to get things. But if it's just a late start or something, yeah, that, you know, that's a concern. That's a, you know, it's definitely a concern. You know, now that we've had time to have boots on the ground and see how long it actually takes, there's a big difference between a two-inch snowfall and a nine, nine, 10-inch wet snowfall. There's a big, big, big difference. You know, the, the, the sales approach that you gave us at the time when we decided to take it private, do it ourselves, was we can save 55 grand over two years, uh, 55 grand a year. That enables us to buy the equipment. That was your sales approach. Now that we're done with those two years, does that 55 grand get melted back into the budget? Or why wouldn't, is there a consideration to have this farmed out once more? Because, like you say, our equipment may not, might not continue to take it. I'm kinda confused about where that money was that we budgeted for the, for the, uh, equipment. Now that we purchased that equipment, where is that 55? Could we put it into a PDM of some kind so that we've got dedicated funds? After all, they were dedicated before. That's, I'm kinda devil's advocating here, but that's my question. Where it, what do we do?
I think you would need to decide then, if you want that to be budgeted, we can do that. But that's about what it costs you a year for snow removal. So the idea would be to get it, and then we drop it out of the budget, you know, that we, we've got enough equipment. If that isn't the case, then you may wanna consider which one is better. Because staffing is, I think, our biggest issue here.
That's another part of it.
Staffing is...
You can buy equipment, but you can't get the people to come to seats. Well, good.
Right, right, right. And no matter how awesome Dave is and your crew is, that icing that you're talking about is different because of the, the small equipment that he's trying to use. Um, I get those complaints as well. And I, I don't think they understand that we're trying to do it with what we call a sidewalk sander. But at some point, you get all this equipment, get all this equipment. We don't have another bus garage or anywhere to put this equipment. You know, is it time to put it back out for bid and just see what the, what that would, would look like? We did do it for two years, and we do have some great equipment.
Right.
One thing, three years, I'm sorry, you're right. The one thing, um, that you do need to remember is that some of that equipment, we do use year-round. So it, it isn't going to waste, and it isn't just, you know...
And, and please remember this. If that is an option to be able to, to, to contract this out again, one of the major, um, factors in having it contracted out was the extra calls.
We got hit hard financially with the extra calls.
And what I mean by that is after they come and plow after two inches or whatever their contract is, people drive on it, um, you have a little bit of snowfall after. You make that extra call, you get billed again for a complete another snow removal. And those numbers almost doubled what you were paying per year, per your contract.
Current equipment could help with those extra calls.
We would still use that.
We also don't have to pay them to side, I mean, I couldn't believe that the cost to get salt put on the sidewalks, he can now do that. He buys it bulk in the back, puts it in those, and we're able to do the sidewalks. So even if we were to contract it out, all this side billing that was happening, we believe could be minimized or if not gone because of the equipment.
Be a combination.
Oh, absolutely. It's, it will never go back to the way it was because of the fact that we do have equipment.
Sure.
Now, with that being said, you're also using it minimally compared to what you would during a blizzard, a heavy snowfall. So, I mean, and, and what you said is right. You can have all the equipment you want, but if you don't have the bodies to fill the seams.
We also would, um, save a lot. The, the, the bid would look better if it's just over two inches. Anything under two, Dave and his crew can take care of. Those are usually pretty manageable.
Good compromise.
And so if you put that in the contract, and I, we haven't talked about this prior, so I don't know if that's what you meant. Um, I think it's something that we could easily budget for, just like we do our lawn care.
Well, I think the other part that we need to discuss is safety. I mean, when we had, and we went to a concert last year, and the parking lot out here was glittering. And you've got hundreds of people crossing, going to the school. One slip and fall, a teacher, someone...
And what's that gonna cost?
What's the cost there? So, uh, along with all that, we've gotta throw in the, were we more susceptible to, to falls this last couple of winters? I know last, when I looked at other park lots, they had already melted, were gone. We were pure ice, though.
And that's simply because we're using equipment that maybe isn't prepared for the sizes. But, you know, um, we could, just so we could continue this conversation later, we could put together some bids on snow removal over two inches and, and no sidewalks, those kinds of things, and just see what that would look like.
I think that'd be smart.
And then sanding for ice, too, then.
The big, and big sanding, yeah, that would be a part of that as well.
So I guess my question, we're talking about the funds that have been saved. Now that the timeframe is done for the three years, where's the money savings from that goal?
Um, we moved it over to the preventive maintenance for the, um, you had, when you approved your budget, we shifted that to the PM for the roof tuck units.
So do we have a, getting off the beaten track, but it's all part of it?
We moved it around.
So, um, the 55 that we've been paying is now into a PM fund?
It's in the same, it's in facilities, but, um, it's designated right now for PM, which Dave and his crew have been able to still do It's in the same, it's in facilities, but, um, it's designated right now for PM, which Dave and his crew have been able to still do. Because we don't know what you're going to want to do with some of the stuff, but, um, we would have to re, relook at that all over again. Preventatively.
Preventatively.
So, thank you.
I guess, and just like Jerry said, you know, we had that money earmarked for snow removal. Either we do or we don't. So, uh, we bought that equipment and not to use for two or three years, but to use more long-term. And, uh, I don't know, from a, from a staff, if you have another year like last year. Are you able to handle the snow removal with the equipment that you have now?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can do it. Yeah.
Would we need all of the equipment or would there be some figure, if we're going to hire out over two inches, would there be some equipment we could sell?
It's just takes so much more time when you have that much more snow, but I think no matter what. I think we need to be able to have the capability to be able to get these parking, get the ice off these parking lots. I mean, the plow equipment, we've obviously done for three years and me and Bruce have a pretty good system. Can we do it? The answer is yes. And to be honest with you, we've even had Andy come over and give us a hand now and then. Um, we don't ask him to, but he will, uh, which has been helpful. But, um, the ice has been unbelievable the last three years. I mean, we get so much rain and then it freezes. I mean, it's like, how do you deal with that? Uh, there was, there was some times where we would put the, uh, salt sand mix down. It'd be so windy, it would blow right into the, right into the curb and down into the gutter. And when you're dealing with the small equipment that we have, it just, it can't accommodate the size of parking lot that we have and get it done the way we want. But, you know, um, can it be done if everything runs perfectly? Yeah. But that's my fear. I mean, we, we haven't, there's no, no plan for replacement or?
Well, just keep in mind though, this conversation came up after this year's budget's already been planned. You guys have already approved your five-year plan. I'm trying to keep you in track and online with that. So when you make significant changes like this, and I, I don't think it hurts to go up for a bid. Just remember that something in facilities needs to move around. And that's the only way this works. We can't overspend. We can't, you know, just say, oh, this sounds like a great idea. So I'm just saying, we really need to stay within that. This did come up after the budget has already been approved for the year. You know, maybe this is something we look at for next year. We try to do it this way one more year. If the truck did go down, you know, those are the things we'd have to look at. Um, but. And I'm, and I'm trying to cuckoo the idea. I think it's a great idea to look at, especially anything over two inches. Um, you still would save us a fortune by doing sidewalks and sanding and, and some of those things. So.
And all the cleanup and for events and special events and, uh, concerts and stuff. I mean, we have the equipment to be able to continually maintain. No matter what we do, whether we completely do it ourselves or we contract it out. This equipment was a fantastic purchase for this district and has paid for itself. I, and will continue to.
Even things like, you know, to put the snow in a, in location. You know, he's able to take his equipment and be able to move that away from a, a blind spot or something like that.
An island or something.
Yeah, an island, anything like that. So I agree. I just, I want to reel it back in a little bit that the budget's already been built for this year and we need to keep that in mind. But I could bring that back next time. We could put it out for a bid and just see what it would look like. It might be a really, it could be a very okay deal.
I, I would agree. I think we should put it out for a bid just to see where it's at.
Because we don't really know what the, what the market is like for that anymore. It could be a, I'm, I mean, how many times do you get over two inches? You know, if it's eight, nine times, what does that look like? Those kinds of things. So why don't we work on that a little bit and see where it?
What would we do? Take, get a couple of bids, take it to facility, have them review it to bring back a recommendation? Is that?
I think we'd have to because we'd also have to have Josh and I re-line that five-year plan with whatever they like and then bring that as a proposal.
Because we all want to be a part of it, but I think it should go through that.
We'll get it started there.
Bring, bring transportation in from Andy to see about.
The truck.
That part of it regardless. We're going to keep the truck. I'll just see if that's what it's going to end up.
Good plan. Because essentially we're only talking really three pieces of equipment.
Right. And the other two are facilities, the one is doing transportation. Let's see Andy working on the, the four wheeler or the front loader.
And that commodity that's used.
Every day, all day.
Everything. I use it today to move soccer balls. You know, and like Kurt had mentioned too, it's like, is that exactly what you're going to have or do you have a backup? You know, maybe the current piece of equipment we have simply moves bleachers, things like that. That's your backup. And maybe you get something to replace it. You know, but we can discuss it further in facilities. Maybe get some, some proposals together or some bids together to see, even if it's realistic with the exit budget that we have.
We'll do it pretty quickly because we always have snow by the end of October. So.
Yeah, we would have to.
And we want something for it.
Have you looked at the net of that? I know we, the equipment was a savings. I know we've got extra overhead costs of hours and stuff like that with the snow removal. How did that net out as far as the increase or decrease in the budget? Just for the snow removal side?
Oh, definitely decreased it.
But by what dollar amount? I guess, I know it's going to, but yeah. You're buying all the stuff.
Rather than guessing, I'd rather get that too. Yeah. And you know, we use a, we use the custodian rate of pay. Sometimes it's stayed up there doing it. So maybe that isn't necessarily fair to do. Uh, but he's salaried and so he's kind of, if he's doing it at 3:00 AM, which is when I usually see him here. You know, we're, we start talking by 3:00 AM, whether I'm going to be bringing buses in or not. Um, he's, and then he stays the whole day. So some could argue that because he's salaried, you know, we, we shouldn't count that pay. I'll give you what I can. Yeah.
And I also work with the custodians too. If I have them come in early, a lot of times they'll leave early to try and minimize that extra expense. Um, I always work with them. I don't want to burn them out. So I do what I can. If, if we can manage for a couple of hours and I can be here in case there's a call in the building. Maybe let them go before my next. So we, we do everything we can.
We're talking, you know, you're thinking 55,000 is a 55 or is it 60 or is it 40?
I know we worked on that, um, and calculated that out. So let's, we'll get that together. Will you send me a reminder?
Can I mention something quick also? I just wanted to kind of piggyback real quick off of what you said earlier and, um, I wanted to personally thank the custodial staff for what happened this summer. I just want everyone to know what got done in these buildings. Um, and that includes the summer staff that I've had for the last four years. And most of them I won't get back anymore. Um. They did an amazing job. I am very, very proud of the way the buildings look. And, you know, the, the time and effort and the care they put into it i- is unbelievable. So I just wanted to make sure that I thank them. And I also include, um, the outside of the building. I'd like to also thank Nick Anderson, Anderson Lawn Care. Man, they stepped up. The outside of this place looks great. Our athletic fields, I talk to them on almost a daily basis. Um, I, I'm just very proud of the way things look around here and, and even from the road when you're driving in. Everything from soccer fields to the baseball fields, the tournament that we had this summer for baseball, I mean, just very, very proud of everything that's happened here. So I wanted to make sure that those people got thanked. And obviously everyone knows that the parking lot project did get done. So I'm very happy with the way that turned out. I wanted to mention that real quick. Yeah, that's, that's really about it. I just want to make sure that some people got thanked, that well deserved.
Everyone got the update on the tennis courts?
Yeah.
Keep it up to speed. We'll, we'll keep on that as well.
Is the, are the nets working at all lately?
I was told they were 100% now. There was one that was sagging or something.
It couldn't be tightened.
Couldn't be tightened down, but I guess now it's fine.
Yeah, we, we got it fixed. Yeah. Works perfect.
If you, if coaches come to you and eat that, make sure they're, they're telling us. Cause I, when we went, Dave hadn't even heard about it.
I, I had no idea that there was even a problem. And when I found out, I think I was there within an hour and had it fixed.
Yep. Good.
Okay, snow removal was a discussion item and facilities will take the ball with that. Once we get bids thrown out, you can give us the information on it. Okay, upcoming meeting, uh, September 24th, we'll dis- discuss the approval of the fiscal year 19 proposed levy certification. Consideration to prove the 18, 19 superintendent's goals. And, uh, any additional information, uh, that the board would like to see on the agenda, we'll, uh, have that in addition. Anything else for the cause?
Service animals.
Oh, are we going to put on this one, this agenda?
Just to let me know it's coming.
Oh, we are adding, um, we've been working on. Jennifer is on a mission to get therapy animals in our, um, district for different capacities. You've already approved a, um, and this hasn't gone through policy committee or anything like that, but we're getting it together. I think you did send it out recently.
Yep, on our website, 625. I don't know if you want to.
We'll wait till they can see if they like when they can look through it or whatever. But, um, just know there's a difference between service animals and therapy animals. Um, and, uh, the regulations that go along with that. So we'll have that on the next board agenda. So, uh, we'll do a first reading and then a second reading. We don't have any therapy animals coming in right now. So I think we're okay. Um, but there is, there's, it's different. You know, service animals, you don't have to be a certified handler. I'm learning a lot about this. But if you're a therapy animal, you do have to be certified. The dog and the handler both need to be certified. Um, quite different. We don't have much say on a service animal. If a child comes and has a therapy animal with them, we basically have to accommodate them. It's usually in an IEP or, you know, something that we have to honor. Therapy animals are obviously used in much different contexts. So pretty excited. They're updating that. Um, I was at a legal conference and made, they said several times, make sure you update this policy. So we'll send it out to the policy committee first. Jennifer did some updates. Lori's done some updates. We'll get it out to the committee. We'll bring it back to you with a first reading. Uh, but again, know that that's coming your way and it is kind of unique. Not every school has to have that policy in place. Uh, but I think it would be wise for us to do that.
Could we have a therapy animal come to the meeting?
Oh, for sure.
Every week.
Jennifer can, Jennifer can definitely set that up. I remember there was a time when I was a principal, we had to get rid of all the animals. Now all the animals are coming back. Yeah, we'll look into that. Thank you Lori, I did forget.
If we have nothing else, I would look for a motion to adjourn. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make one. One second.
Jerry on the motion, Kurt on the second. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.
Um, ask Greg Anderson, city engineer, to be here with us tonight. So if there's any specific questions on what's going on. Um, it, it took a lot to get the survey the way we wanted it and make sure that both sides agree on where the survey's at. I think we're at that point. And then this week we're putting in curb.
Curb we'll go in this week? Yeah, so.
Take over what's going to be happening.
So the cul-de-sac will be centered in the Minnesota right away and that's the 18. So we have two pink lines here. The second pink line will be the curb on the backside of the cul-de-sac. And in, in this pink line in the middle of the street, that'll be the street cul-de-sac. And in between, it'll be green space with the exception of the sidewalk. On your parking lot, it'll continue east and come around in the grass area, tie in right before that dirt is where the grass is removed. And the goal is to have all the pedestrians cross at one point rather than the two that it used to be. So, and then as we put this back together, that nose of that old cul-de-sac, um, parking berm will come out. And we can run that parking probably to the first tall cone parallel with that power line. Add probably three stalls, give or take versus the four or five we thought we were going to lose when we started this. And then from that pink line back here, we'll all get patched in. We'll take this old stuff out. We'll patch all this in with black top, get it to drain. And we can even finish the yellow up to the curb if we'd like. So this looks like it was supposed to have been done along with the original project. And that sidewalk at the back of the parking lot will continue east, wrap around the backside of the cul-de-sac and then tie it here like I talked about. So the curb and concrete work should all be done this week. Black top, fingers crossed, will be done by the end of next week. At least the first lift. Once the first lift's in, then they come in and do the boulevards, get the topsoil in, start doing their sodding. And then the final lift of black top will probably go down the first or second week of October, depending on the weather. Their completion dates are first Friday in October, which they're pretty close to hitting. And then everything needs to be done by that third week of October, which I think they'll get to.
So you're pretty much on track because that's what you had originally told me.
Yeah, yeah. The last big stuff they're doing is up Mill Street off of Grove. And they'll tackle that starting tomorrow. But Wednesday, the concrete guys will be here and they'll be doing everything that's left on Minnesota and the side streets out to state. And hopefully by the weekend, all the concrete's done. The first thing we're going to try to get them to do is all the missing sidewalk pieces between here and there, then do the curb. And then get all, everything buttoned up and backfilled. And the end of next week, we get that black top down. Then the weather can't bother us much anymore and we're home. And I know we had some questions on the right away. And I did find the old survey, which I'm sure you have too, from when the school bought the Armory parcel. There was a bluff street right away that existed. When those cross laugh there by the fence, that is the east line of Bluff Street. And it used to be years ago in the 50s, city limits. And Bluff Street was planted all the way to the north and all the way to the south, like they like the flat streets in two dimensions and didn't realize they had hills. In the mid 50s, Bluff was vacated from Minnesota south. And then it was attached to your parcel when you bought it. It still doesn't show that online on the Goodyear County stuff, but that's what Samuelson found as part of, part of his search on that. So if you project the line from those last south, our cul-de-sac will stop a couple of feet short. The sidewalk will come up and we'll be in our Minnesota street right away, which goes this way. And this stuff will all be repaired on the school side and it would look like it should have been. And, um, we'll be out of your hair.
I really appreciate you doing those extra surveys. I know that there's a lot of, I don't understand it. You guys do. Um, and it was really nice to see it kind of, everyone agreed at the end, which was nice. Thank you for doing that.
So it's easier to move lines than there's extra time.
Yeah, let's not do that.
Dave had showed me a, uh, some camera work about how technical it gets on a typical school day in the spring. How has that changed in the first few days of school? What have we seen so far?
Well, you know, our primary concern was turning in and onto Minnesota street from our parking lot area and what this looked like at drop off. And I think in the first, we, we pretty much moved to drop off at, at the field house door. The next two doors down, we've got the space and we've got the turnaround in the back. And from, from what I've seen after school for the first beginning, this is what it looked like. So we're asking parents to pick up either on the south side of the field house, which we asked them to do that last year. New this year is, uh, like the gym door or the, or the next door down to the back. Um, and not pick up at the field house just because this is such a narrow congested area. So I, Dave, I think, I, I've seen it both before and after school, this is what we're also talking about.
Yeah, it's been going really well. And, uh, like Tim said, to eliminate the exit after school to go onto Minnesota street. None of that happens now. Everyone exits out. One exit and then ultimately when the, the other end of the parking lot's done, that'll be another exit for them to go out. So I guess I've been, uh, to this point, I've been pleased.
Your crew has been watching at 5:00. How's that been? Cause that's a typical pickup time. So if at 5:00 they got their sporter done, what's it been like around that time?
It's, you know, it still have some, some congestion issues, but it's been a week. You know, this isn't finished yet. Just getting the message out. But yeah, it's, ultimately when no one's standing out here, you know, people do seem to do what they want.
I think the problem when you were showing us, we've got kids coming out of this door and they fan out. How has that affected? They're still fanning out.
They're, they're still doing it, but, um, you know, by not having cars picking up kids right along here. It's eliminated a lot of those kind of guard out between cars situations. People can see if they're coming in to go pick up a little bit of car.
Double lane congestion going in between cars to get to the lot. You know, that, that's been eliminated to this point. Um, so at least they can see what they're coming out into.
And the other piece that's nice about this right now too, is we used to have a lot of traffic that would come. Students coming out of the parking lot and moving down Minnesota street. And they can't do that now. So all of the traffic is just moving away from where our students are crossing. So we used to have cars coming and going all right here with students crossing or whatever too. And it's eliminated all of that down that way. So it's, from our end, I think it, it's, it seems to be better. And, and parents are, parents are doing a really nice job of picking up on the south side of the field house. They've kind of figured out, uh, this is the lane to pick up students in. This is the lane if we're going to go through and turn left and, and exit. So.
And you don't mind people that pick up in the front of the building?
No.
People have been doing that forever, but I've noticed more and more people are doing that now.
Yeah, picking up in front is fine too. We just ask that they be aware of buses and not pick up their own buses.
I was always surprised at the narrowness of this little alleyway right in here. But that doesn't present a problem if you've got some oversized vehicles.
It has. Yeah, it, it hasn't. You know, we had, it was a Friday, Thursday where we had a, a late semi delivery. They have a crowded thing back there.
It showed up at 3:00, which was a bad timing.
That doesn't happen very often.
So this is all green space from the pink line pretty much over, over.
And then, and then a five foot walk.
And then this will be new asphalt, mom.
I guess that facility, we should do those all that. We'll leave it as well. That's fine if we are, it's just good to know.
That's a city question. I guess if it's out of your property, I would assume you would want it.
Sure. Makes sense. I just, it'll be a part of the rest of the town.
Yep.
Anyone else? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And a couple of weeks, we shouldn't be out of your hair.
Just keep sending pictures and updates. Kind of hopefully it all come together.
I appreciate the school patience. Usually we don't get that. When it's like, why aren't you done? Why aren't you done? Why aren't you done? So it's, it's worked out well and maybe having this kind of was a blessing of the skies. People were forced to have to go the other way.
Well, it's kind of teaching them now. I mean, it's, it's getting them in the habit now of going around the side too.
And then that alley will be signed one way. When we're done, all the way. So it'll be one way east.
That was one of the first things they asked who decided to do that because it's going to be paved now too.
Yep.
And so I can just imagine, you know, them flying down that alleyway, but now it'll be reversed. So they can't do it. Right, right. All right. Well, thank you Greg. Appreciate it.
I put out a, in my weekly parent email, the, the drop off and pickup plan with pictures is there. So.
Yep.
Goes out every Friday.
It was a real eye opener to see the, uh, the traffic. The foot traffic on the side of here and the thing that you showed me from your cell phone or whatever. Must be from the cameras.
Yeah, it was from the cameras. Yeah.
I think it's almost 400 kids, the drive.
Yeah, it's, when that bell rings, this is the exit. This is where they all come out. That's where post the real problems.
I can see the safety. You should come first on with that picture.
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect.
Here we go. Thank you.